Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February 9, 2016. We begin with the special order calendar. Decision items, item number 1, 585-91BC, 222-44-BRADAK-ABBEY, QUEENS.
Good morning. Paul Bonfilio from Bahia. I thought I was old. Sorry about TVs. Anyway, I was at the review session about three weeks ago. I submitted all that information, but I did give to the staff an 11-by-17 plan to be scanned. Perhaps that's where the problem was. I don't know. But anyway, I have a new set here, and I've indicated the type of shrubs that are there.
Great.
And I've got three copies as Carlo wanted.
Can you just hand it up and then we'll take a quick look?
Sure.
We have to reopen. We have to reopen. We're receiving materials.
Want to reopen?
No, we're just receiving materials. We're going to take a quick look.
I mean, the new shrubs are arbovitae. There's cypress or cedar type of plants.
Sorry, since the matter's closed, we're good.
We're just going to take a look at it, and hopefully we don't have to reopen.
Okay.
And then we'll just. Okay. So then for our motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Thank you very much.
Continued hearing items, item number 2, 132-92BC, 3948 AMBOY ROAD, STATEN ISLAND.
Good morning. My name is Billy Yuan. I'm the applicant, and I have reviewed the executive session online yesterday, and I understand fully some needs to be clarified. I think one of the items there is the hour of operation. There's no change. It will be the same as what is stated there before. Also, the function will be limited to as stated. So that's no change also in the valley parking. And as you know, the curb cut had been removed, two curb cuts. Also, the razor wire, the bob wire, actually is no longer there. One of the photo there probably might have shown it, but that's an error on the photo.
So it's an old photo?
It's an old photo. I think the one along Brown. But along Hillside has all gone. And also, the one all around, if you see one of the photo recent, inside the parking lot shows no bob wire there. And I updated the plan to show that no bob wire. And we also noted that there's no outdoor event. Also, there was a suggestion about putting planter box. So we added that on the plan. I have the revised plan here showing to just block off if anybody wants to jump the curb and park there. So it would be blocked off from any parking.
Do you have those plans here?
Yes, I have. Yes. You show no parking on that front yard, showing the planter box. There was a banner there that will be removed by the weekend.
The what will?
There was a banner.
Ah, oh, it's going to be removed.
Yeah, that's going to be removed. And that's about it.
Is everybody okay with what they say? Okay, so I think actually we could have submit these now, right? We'll consider them submitted. So in which case, I think we can close this. So for motion to close. Are there any speakers? Of the motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And I think we have everything we need, so we can move for a motion to grant on condition. So I'm just going to read the conditions. To approve on condition of no simultaneous use with the retail, that graffiti is to be removed within 48 hours, that it comply with the prior tree removal topographic modification conditions that were from the original prior grants, that there be no events held outside in the parking lot or along the front of the site, and that additional seating, okay, and that the banner is removed. Okay, are there any other conditions? Okay, so on those conditions, for motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for making those changes.
Item number 3, 226-09BC, 24 East 13th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning. Jessica Rubinstein on behalf of Rothgrug Rothgrug Inspector. We attended yesterday's review session. We believe the only outstanding issue was the hung ceiling that was never installed. We'd like to remind the board that this is just an extension of term application with no changes. The PCE has been here for the past 40 years. No individual tenant mailings went out. However, we respectfully believe that due to the fact that the owner provided his support just through signing the affidavit to file this application, the management company sent a letter saying that they had never heard any complaints. There were no complaints listed on the Department of Buildings website. So we believe that although the mitigation measures were never installed, that the PCE has never been a nuisance to any of the neighbors.
Any comments on that?
How long has the management company, the same management company, been in?
The same management company since the last approval in 2009. And I believe they've been there for about 10 years. And the reason why the individual tenants, to be honest, were never notified was because the building owners don't contact the tenants directly. That's all through the management company. So the fact that the management company provided that letter, that's almost speaking on behalf of the tenants, because they're the ones dealing with them directly.
Maybe, because we don't know if the individual tenants got notified at all, right?
Well, they weren't, because it's not required of these extension of term applications. However, if the board is requiring it, we can do that. We just didn't think it was required while filing this application.
No, it's just that what makes it difficult is it was clear that there was an attenuation measure that was required, which was not done.
Right.
So then calls into question. I mean, the way that the architect described the structure, to me, didn't sound like it was such a heavy structure that it would be preventing sound from traveling. So I don't know why the original attenuation measures were requested. But that's why knowing about what the neighbor thinks upstairs, and if management is relatively recent, then they might not be aware, or maybe the management isn't really on the top of things, or...
Well, the same management company since the last approval.
Okay.
However, if the board is requiring it, we can do that.
What does everyone think?
When I read the architect's letter, I thought of the Manhattan School of Pratt Institute, which was a prior manufacturing building with wooden floors. And you can hear everybody walking on those floors. And sound travels. So I wasn't really convinced by the architect's letter without the, you know, hung ceiling. So I questioned the need for the noise attenuation, based on the fact that it has wooden beams and a wooden floor.
So would the board be satisfied if we did receive letters from the tenants attesting to the fact that they've never been bothered by the PCEs?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think what we could do is we could close this pending receipt of those letters. So we don't have to go through additional things. Okay, so there are no speakers. So for a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Okay, so then the letters ideally will be submitted like within a month, something like that?
I think they prefer sooner than that.
Sorry, again?
I think we would prefer to come back sooner than that.
Can you get the letters?
Perhaps by the end of February.
Can you get the letters sooner? I mean... Our calendar is... It's March. It's not so good. What do you think?
I don't know. You don't really have, I don't know how fast you can get letters from tenants. I mean, that means they have to write a letter.
Okay, so what's next on the calendar?
Unfortunately, our calendar is...
But this is kind of simple.
Yeah, but the 23rd, we have...
No, I mean, something in March.
Yeah.
March 8 is huge.
It's just a, it's just the decision.
If you guys, if you want to review the letters, along with everything else, you have to review from March 8.
Right. Presuming that, you know, no one says that there's an issue.
Right.
It would only be if someone said there was an issue, you have to reopen it. Right. I just don't want to have us reviewing 30 cases. March 22nd is the first available time. But that's probably representative of when, because you need to submit enough in advance anyway, right? So March 22nd means a submission on March 1st, which doesn't give you that much time to get the letters.
Full slow mo?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 4, 35-10BC, 144-1177 FABBEY, QUEENS. Project's being adjourned. Everybody's here for this. So they requested an adjournment to March 8, which is not possible. So I think then... I think we need to do April 5.
A lot of cases.
Oh, submission date? March 15. Sorry, March 16. Item number 5, 16-12BC, 184 NOSTRIT AVBEY, BROOKLYN, the request for an adjournment.
Good morning. Jessica Rubinstein on behalf of Eric Palatnik, PC.
So I'm not sure what the, there was no specific adjournment date requested, but the next really is March, is April 5.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So with a submit date of March 16.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. New cases, item number 6, 227-10BC, 20412 NORTHERN BULLEBAR, QUEENS.
I have attachments for this one. That's for Rubinstein on behalf of Eric Palatnik.
Are you testifying this one, Eric?
You have to do work.
Are you testifying? This one for everybody?
Yeah.
Only one set?
It's just one?
Yeah, I guess.
Should be one of each. Picture, the plans, the zoning analysis, and the letter from the community board. Okay. So originally, we believed the first question was about the community board recommendation. So the community board had actually voted to disapprove this application when we first presented it. And that was due to the fact that the operator was conducting it in a disorderly manner. They were parking cars there, just as you saw the old 1950s Cadillac. The reason was because the operator was originally leasing the property by way of the previous owners, Getty. And after the ownership transferred to BP, BP had actually sent the operator, he's in the cis leather, to try to prevent them from parking the cars and to try to tidy up the site. When the operator failed to do so, BP initiated a court action to evict the operator. And so that court action took place, and due to the court's decision, the operator will be evicted on March 1. So we notified the community board, and that's the letter that you see in front of you, in response after a telephone conversation, that although the community board originally disapproved the application, they were happy to hear that the operator would be replaced and evicted by March 1, and that BP has really taken significant steps to try to tidy up the site.
This says March 31st.
Oh, I'm sorry, March 31st.
Okay.
Okay. The second issue, I believe the board had a question about the particle board fence. That's a construction fence on the adjacent property. The board also asked about the existing AST enclosure and the WO to be relocated and the FO to be removed. So in English, as you'll see on the photograph that I passed out, we relabeled the photograph that was originally submitted to explain what those abbreviations stood for. You'll also notice, if you look at the plans, WO stands for waste oil, FO stands for fuel oil tank, and the AST is the above-ground storage tanks. So you'll see on page Z006 of the plans. If you look to the west of the building, you'll see that those have been depicted. And then you'll see on page 001, the plans indicate where the proposed waste oil tank will be relocated. The waste oil tank is only going to be relocated a few feet over from its original location, and that's due to the concrete sidewalk that's being installed.
Why do you need a waste oil tank and a fuel oil tank?
So they're removing the fuel oil tank, I believe. The fuel oil tank was to convert the gas to heat.
For the building?
For the building.
Okay.
But that's no longer required based on the new construction. And then the waste oil tank is still required for the car service operations.
Right, okay.
And so that's just going to be relocated a few feet.
Okay.
In terms of landscaping, I believe this was Commissioner Chanda's point, that you had asked for the landscaping to continue along the east side of the property as it is on the west side. So you'll see that these are revised plans showing that the landscaping has been redesigned to continue along the east side, so that it's equivalent in nature to that existing along the west side of the property line.
This is great. I was mostly pointing to the section that was backing against the residential, that you've extended along the commercial frontage, and that...
Might as well keep it even.
That's fine.
Great. And then lastly, I believe the remaining issue had to do with the parking. The reason why we were reducing the parking was due to the fact that we were widening the concrete walkway around the west side of the building. This is due to the fact that we were adding a handicap parking space with the associated loading area, both of which are required per building code. However, to satisfy the board's concerns, we have revised the plan to add two additional parallel parking spaces along the west property line for a total of eight spaces.
Right. And did you revise your facts and findings, the first paragraph that was a little confusing? That you actually said that you were increasing and decreasing at the same spot?
Yeah, that was a whoa. So we'll revise that, and we'll eliminate the reference to the non-permanent containers as well. Those have been removed.
Yeah.
So we'll fix that up. And also, the zoning analysis I distributed also just depicts the revised parking to eight spaces.
And then, I think there was a question about the trash dumpsters, the dumpsters being in an enclosure.
What was the question about that exactly?
If you could put the dumpsters behind an enclosure of some sort.
Okay.
Or within an enclosure.
That can be done.
So that's to amend the drawings to show them in an enclosure, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I think that answered everything. So the only thing we need from you is to amend the drawings.
And the statement.
And the statement. And to amend the drawings to show the enclosure around the trash, and amend the statement. Okay, so we can close this. For motion to close.
There's a speaker.
Speaker. Oh, I'm sorry, there's a speaker.
Yes.
I believe these are submissions from the speaker.
My name is Henry Uller. I'm the first vice president of the Orbondale Improvement Association, which covers the site that's in question. We overlap in that area with the Bayside Clear Spring Council headed by Mr. Mandingo Shaka. We've been very concerned about this site for a long, long time. It's been quite a strain on the neighborhood. During the last year or so, we've had a situation where they had a storage container being used as an office on the site. They've been parking their vehicles on the street behind the gas station along 45th Road. And the neighbors in that area have not been able to use their own street for parking purposes, a lot of the time because of the vehicles there. There's been a pile of tires on the site, on the side of the building, and it's an eyesore. The last I looked, the tires were still there. There's been instances where they've been parking commercial vehicles on the site overnight, which is illegal. They've been in violation of their present variance. They've had more than eight vehicles parking on the site continuously, all the time. Right before the full board hearing in December, they parked six wrecks on the site. Those wrecks stayed there all month long over the holidays. And finally, they've been removed except for one. They did not renew their certificate of occupancy. The temporary one expired in March of 2014. And when they came to the full board meeting, the applicant, not Mr. Palatnik, but another representative, said that, well, BP couldn't do anything about this, that, you know, this client was a bad client, and they really couldn't do anything. They were the ones doing the application, not the actual person operating the gas station. And that didn't sit well with the community board. They turned down the variance request, the extension request unanimously. We then went to the borough president in January, and by that time, Mr. Palatnik came, and he apologized for the situation at the gas station. The borough president had a lot of questions for him about the site itself. And he reached out to the Orbondale Improvement Association. He wanted to have a conversation with us and with BP officials. We contacted the community board, and we spoke to the district manager, Susan Seinfeld, and the chair, Christine Hader, and they arranged to have the telephone conversation with BP and with Mr. Palatnik. And it seems that a lot of progress has been made, and we're very pleased about that. As you heard, the present tenant will be evicted by March 31. And they're not going to have the situation where they leased it to one person, who then leased it to another person. There's not going to be a middleman anymore. And I think that's very positive. Now, the neighbors, we've heard from the neighbors, both at the zoning commission, zoning committee hearing, and the full board hearing, they're concerned about the lighting from the new canopy. They're concerned about the waste oil tank, where it's going to be stored on the site, because the homes are right behind the site. They're also concerned about the convenience store that's supposed to be at the site. It was mentioned that the convenience store would only be for people that were getting gas there. And we were wondering, how are you going to prevent other people from going into using the convenience store? It didn't seem to make much sense. But things have seemed to be working out. They are going to get rid of the tenant, like we said, and we're very pleased about that. And at this point, we still are very skeptical about endorsing this variance extension. We would like to see some results. We would like to see this particular tenant go, if he can't abide by his variance. And we want to make sure that the neighbors are safe, and the neighbors are not bothered in the future by this particular station. So we look forward to the future, and we hope that this new neighbor, this new person coming into the business will be a good neighbor, and that we'll be able to work together.
Thank you. Just to clarify, you're concerned about the future, the post-March 31st tenant, is that...
Right. We want to make sure. It was mentioned at the telephone conversation that they're going to have a tenant who they've done business with before. He operates other BP stations, and it hasn't been any problems with him. So we're hoping that if he comes into this particular station, the same thing will be, that he'll be a good neighbor, and we won't have problems in the future.
Okay. But you haven't gone to see who that other tenant is?
No.
Or what their other operation is like?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, just that the waste oil tank is really just, they're going to put a new one in where the old one was located, so it's not really a new location for the waste oil tank. They're going to get rid of a fuel tank.
Right.
And they did give us illumination plans, noting that there would not be any impact on the neighbors to the rear.
Good.
Was your concern that the waste oil was going to leak or leach into someone's property?
Well, the neighbors are concerned. When they hear waste oil, and it's right next to their property, they get very concerned. And when they hear that the gas tanks are going to be replaced, you know, this is a positive thing, but they think, well, you know, is it leaking? How is it going to affect my property and my life? So they're concerned about it. So if they're concerned, we're concerned.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other speakers?
Oh, there is another speaker? Are there other speakers on this?
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
Hello. My name is Monique Roperson. I'm actually a neighbor that lives behind this BP. My biggest problem is, there was a Getty previously at that location, was closed down because the tanks were not changed. Unfortunately, BP took occupancy, and the tanks have not been changed since. I have a problem with that. As far as the variances, I understand they have to go through rules, but my problem is, why were they able to open, refill these tanks that were previously, the shop was closed down, or the gas station was closed down, because they was way over their time limit of having those tanks be used? That is a serious concern, because they are old tanks that have been there for some time, and they're constantly using them. As far as what the gentleman was saying, as far as how it looks over there, yes, there is a bunch of wrecks there. The convenience store is open to anybody in the area, and one of the meetings, they said it was not open, which was definitely not true. The spaces are being taken on every side of the property, not just one area in which they requested, or the amount of spaces that they're stating that they use. They're using all points on that gas station. I just, my biggest thing is really with the tanks, while it's still being operated, while they're still filling these tanks up with new fuel, when in fact, the gentleman who owned it before was closed down because it was a hazard to have it open and not have the tanks replaced.
Well, they are proposing to replace the underground storage tanks for the gasoline.
I definitely understand that, and they're doing this now, but this gas station has been open for some time.
But they're still using the old ones.
And they took years to close the one who went beyond the limit of having the tanks used. So if they closed somebody who, you know, was a regular mom-and-pop gas station, and they closed them for not keeping up with their gas tanks, it was never changed. So how is it that they just reopens and just started filling them up all over again? That's definitely the problem that I have, is being a neighbor behind. Is there leakage? Is it safe? Is this something that we need to be concerned with?
Okay, we'll follow up with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've...
That's all of them.
Couple of questions. One is, I'm not seeing on the board... Couple of questions. One is, I'm not seeing on the plans, and maybe I just didn't take notes like that, that there was a convenience store that, is there?
It's a small, like, you know, like...
But it's not shown on the drawing.
It's actually that little square where your finger is.
But it's not indicated.
It's actually, I think, only by way of the sign in the back.
That's what I mean. But if we have a convenience store, that should be in plans. So all we have is, the only thing that indicates it is the elevation where the sign is different, and the storefront is different. But we don't have the calculation. I don't know where this convenience store got approved, because my notes don't say there was ever...
There isn't anything in the paperwork about it either, or it's square footage, or anything.
Right. So the original approval was for service base, not convenience store.
We'll have to get back to the board on that.
Okay. So, and what is the scope of the convenience store? Is it really just that little square, or is it bigger?
It's that little square.
Okay. It's a little square. But you can actually see that, because normally, the convenience stores are just like, when you think of them for service base, they're just selling oil, and, you know, windshield wiper fluid, or wherever. That doesn't sound like what this is. This is a regular convenience store, therefore, needs to have been...
Like candy. It sells candy and snacks, and you can also pay for your gas there as well.
I think originally, it was probably just a little office for the service.
That they expanded.
That they expanded into...
Right. That's what I mean. But they're not supposed to have, that's changing accessory use, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the first. So you need to include information about the convenience store in your statement, and the drawings have to be very clear that that's a convenience store, including a floor plan showing where the service base are versus the convenience store, and...
We'll revise the plans to get back to the board on that. I just want to seek further clarification.
Okay. And then the next thing is, did we get a clean spill report on this?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
So we need a spill...
And, yeah, could you take a look into the, you know, the report that it was, that they were supposed to close a particular tank or tanks down, and if they are reusing them, under what condition they're permitted to do that?
Okay. And then the other thing is, with respect to the future tenant, so BP's already designated a future tenant.
Correct.
Could we get some information about where, what other locations the tenant operates?
Sure.
And more than just information, more than just the addresses, we'd like, maybe the best thing to do really for us is photographs of those other sites.
Okay.
To show that they manage those sites well. It'd be useful if you gave that to the community board, since they're obviously concerned. And then you could reach out to the community board to get those materials.
We'll do that.
So...
And we do appreciate the speakers for coming in today. We don't disagree with anything that they've said, but as I had said previously, the tenant, the owners have taken court action to evict the tenant. So the best way, I guess, to update this site and to keep it in an orderly manner is to wipe the slate clean, in a sense. And that's what they're trying to do.
But, you know, one of the things that gives pause is, this was the landlord for a long time that allowed, right? BP's been the landlord for a long time?
No, it used to be a Getty station, and BP just took over.
So BP...
So once BP took over, they immediately took action to try to clean up the site.
Okay.
Famously good guys, BP.
BP to the rescue.
Yeah, well, at least it's not Mexico, okay?
Right. Just think about the future, not about the past.
Okay, all right. So with that, then, I don't think we should close. So can you submit those materials? So the modified drawings, the spill information, the tank closure requirements, and information about the other locations run by the same new tenant, okay, which includes photographs?
Okay.
Okay. So, anything else? So if you could submit that by March 16th, do you think that's enough time?
Yes.
For the next hearing on April 5th?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar, item number seven, 6515 B.C., 6615 A.
Okay. This one I'm recusing.
This application is going to be deferred for decision until February 23rd.
We can have Marjorie come back.
That's quick.
That was quick.
Item number eight, 11415 A through 12515 A, Jane Court, Staten Island.
Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Rothkirk, Rothkirk Inspector.
Okay. So we have the plans updated with the notes and the restrictive declaration finalized. Thank you very much for working with us on that. So for...
Thank you.
A motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number nine, 18115 A through 18615 A, Carriage Port, Staten Island.
Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Eric Palatnik, P.C.
And likewise, plans were updated with the proper notes. We have a restrictive declaration that was finalized. Thank you. And so for motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items, item number 10, 23415 A, 738 East Sixth Street, Manhattan.
Okay.
It's been requested until March 22nd.
But we can't do it on March 22nd, so April 6th will be the next.
April 5th.
With a submission on March 16th, I just want to check April 6th. Yeah, April 6th.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, April 5th. Sorry. March 16th submission. Okay. Zoning calendar, decision items, item number 11, 5215 BZ, 10216 Liberty Avenue, Queens.
It's my show today, apparently. Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Rothkirk, Rothkirk Inspector.
It's like a one-person land use.
She is everybody in New York City.
Call me.
Everybody else, everybody else, Florida. So, for, I think we're done with this one. A motion to grant. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, 6315 BZ, 35 Second Place, Manhattan.
Oh, man. So this one, we're going to take this off-count, right? It's too funny.
Item number 13, 7615 BZ, 1825 and 22nd Street, Brooklyn.
Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of the Law Office of L.A. I know, it's funny, right? Everyone's like at the movies, and I'm here, so.
Where is everybody? What is so special about today? The subway was empty also, I noticed.
Write the words out the letter.
I only take up one seat.
For a motion to grant. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items, item number 14, 31914 BZ, 1781 South Avenue, Staten Island.
Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Eric Palatnik, P.C.
Okay. So with this one, there's confusion over what in the world all that paperwork means with respect to the alarms and sprinklers being installed in the PCE, and Mr. Scaduto, I think, is here to clarify.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners Anthony Scaduto for the Fire Department. First, I'd like to ask who I bill for the copy paybook, five cents a page, my personal printer. It was, yeah, it was a plethora. Basically, I was able to filter through and call out really what was appropriate, just so you could record the numbers. In that pile, there's a, the main application, which was the submission to the Building Department for legalization, is application number 510032420. That's the application for the PCE. Connected to that, for the interior fire alarm, is a separate and proper submission under job number 520248580. So that is the application, and it was reviewed and approved for installation, and permits were issued. The applicant did, in fact, install the alarm system that we see in the photographs. So the engineering portion was all approved, written off, and the system was installed. An appointment has been made, I was able to confirm this late yesterday, with my electrical unit, an appointment has been made for, I believe, February 25th. And although the document states Victory Boulevard, it is in fact for 1781 South Avenue. And the results, of course, this is strictly an operational, confirmed installation of all appliances, and operational test, and results with that are basically immediate. So the applicant, or the engineer, I don't know who's actually processing it, but if they follow up with my electrical unit, I'll probably be able to get that within a few days after the testing. So that's the pertinent information. The rest of the paper, we can remove from the folder. It's meaningless.
Okay, okay. And what about the sprinklers?
The sprinkler systems existing, the sprinkler system is actually part of the overall mall system. It is functioning, and it has been recently tested, and it's approved. The changes that might take place is when they actually formalize the plans, there's going to be a cursory check to see if some of the sprinkler heads, based on the new layout, need to be relocated. But it's not affecting the operation, and our recommendation is that it shouldn't affect the board's review.
Okay. So based on the paperwork that you have now on the fire alarm?
It's test complete, and it's done, and we have absolutely no additional objections to...
Okay. So you're okay that the inspection won't happen until the end of the month?
Yeah, and we have no objection if the board closes. That's...
Okay. Closes and votes, or would you want us to hold it open?
It's at your discretion. The system is there, it is operational, and it's really a matter of checking the proper boxes.
Okay. But I don't, I don't want to hold it up anymore. We can get the...
And I was telling Jessica, this particular engineer seems to know how to process the legalization, so it's possible that someone could reach out to him, not from the board, but in general, for the general public. He seems to know the process of how to get an alarm system through the system.
Wow.
For a PCE for legalization. So he might have the right formula.
He might have the right what?
The right formula to get the alarm system approved. Because I was amazed, you know, I was able to actually find that buildings allowed this alarm system to be filed, which is different from all the other ones that were having problems.
In Staten Island.
Well, that's the thing. It's Staten Island, and each borough works differently. So in any case, as far as the Fire Department is concerned, this case is...
There we go. We're good.
Thank you. Okay, there are no, thank you so much.
I think it's also important to note that, thanks to the board's attorney, that's also why they were able to process the application for the fire alarm, so.
Okay. So in other words, a couple of calls, the DOB helped. Okay.
Correct.
Good to know. Okay. Okay. So for a motion to close, then?
Yes. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And I think, based on what we've learned, we can vote on this. So for motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This concludes the morning session of the Board of Standards and Appeals. We'll resume at 1:00.
The afternoon calendar is now 10:44.
It's just us. Cameras on?
Cameras on.
Cameras on. We've got our, hold on.
Mics are on?
Mics on.
Okay. It's almost 1:00. We'll just do one. It's one minute before 12, 1, is that okay?
No, mine says 1.
1, okay. Good afternoon, New York City Board of Standards and Appeals, public hearing for February 9th. This is the afternoon calendar. Item number 1, 25215 BZ, 1120 East 24th Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, so there's no one here to present this.
Neighbors? I don't see anybody, right?
Yeah. There's no, there's actually no one here, so I guess we just postpone because...
Do you have any further comment concerning your question pre-appealing?
They're not here.
Just what you said yesterday.
Yeah, just from yesterday.
They can look at the tape.
Right, they can listen to the tape.
I have one additional question. And the question was, does section 23-451, a minimum required planting, does that need to be waived? Because 20% minimum required planting is there, and I wanted to know if that needs to be waived or not.
Well, we don't have the authority to waive it under this.
So we don't, but then this is already a pre-existing condition, which I don't think it has a front yard.
Well, they usually calculate it as the percentage of the existing front yard. If the existing front yard is non-compliant, then it's 20% of that non-compliant front yard.
Okay. And they still have to prove that they have a legal non-compliant.
Legal, right.
That was one of our questions.
Okay. So, yeah. Well, more than the front yard, they have to show that the side yard conditions are also legal, not complying.
So this is going to be postponed?
Okay, yeah. So we're going to postpone the hearing until March 22nd, with a submission date March 2nd.
March 2nd. Okay. This concludes the public hearing for February 9th, 2016.
Thank you.
So March 20...
2nd. Submission March 2nd.